Alright, are we ready?
You ready Bailey?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, welcome everyone to the Academy for Integrated Arts Public Hearing with the Missouri Charter Public School Commission. Thank you for joining us this evening as we hear from the school leadership and public about renewal of the Academy for Integrated Arts Charter contract. My name is Bailey Geist and I am with the Missouri Charter Public Association and will be serving as your moderator. We will begin the hearing with welcoming remarks followed with a brief presentation by Academy for Integrated Arts team. Then turn to hearing comment from the public. If you did not sign up to speak this evening but would like to provide comments, please feel free to place them in the chat or email to info@mcpsc.mo.gov. Please note for those signed up when it is your opportunity to provide comments, I will introduce you and unmute your microphone. We asked that you keep your comments to under two minutes to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. I will now introduce it as Susan Cole, Chair of the Missouri Charter Public School Commission.
Thank you Bailey. Thanks to all of you for attending this public hearing that's being monitored by the Missouri Charter Public School Commission. We're really anxious to hear your comments this evening. There are several commissioners from around the state that are listening in and are on your screen. I'm in St. Louis as are staff members from the commission. Commissioner Peggy Taylor is in Nixa. Commissioner Mary Jane Almodos is in Cape Girardeau. Commissioner Alicia Catarba, who I think will join us in a bit perhaps, is in Kansas City. We want to dedicate all the time that's allotted for these comments for you. So I'm going to call on Tricia DeGraff, Executive Director at the Academy, who will continue with the work of this afternoon. Tricia, it's all yours.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. And, um, thank you. Okay, so, hi, I'm Tricia DeGraff and I'm the Executive Director at Academy for Integrated Arts. This is my eighth year working at AFIA and I appreciate this opportunity to be here today with the commissioners and the public to share more information about our school. Thank you for the commissioners for joining us from across the state to be here today. Thank you to Robin and Martha for all that you do to support our work. I appreciate your steadfast commitment to education quality. Thank you to our community members and board members for being here today, including those who are listening and those who are providing public comment from teachers to family members to former students and community members. Each day, I have the great honor of working with a dedicated, kind, and caring community that is committed to learning for transformative purposes. A little bit about where we've been, we are in our 10th year. We moved into a newly renovated building in 2016. We have a wonderful school building for our students and our community members and we're so grateful for the many people in the Kansas City community made that possible and we're so grateful for their support. We added pre-kindergarten students into the 2016 because we're very much committed to early learning. We have during this charter term, we have increased our students from 207 to 255 and we built out an additional four classrooms, a gym, and a stage during the summer of 2017. People who walk through our doors, who either are students, staff members, visitors, they always tell me that AFIA feels like a family. That's something that's really important to us. About 85% of our students are black and the remaining 15% are from all different backgrounds. We serve students across the Kansas City metro as long as they live within the Kansas City Public School boundaries, they can come to our school. We do have buses. We always want people to have the opportunity to come and we never want transportation to be a barrier. We value diversity, equity, inclusion, and since our school population is predominantly black, we're proud to share that nearly half of our teaching staff is black. We are continually working to make sure that each and every individual who comes into our building feels a sense of belonging and we value the power of ensuring that students see themselves in the curriculum, in the daily lessons, the books we read, the art we view, as well as having the opportunity to learn about cultures and people that are different than them. That's very important to us, to be affirmed in their own identity as well as learning about others. As is evident in our name, we believe in the arts, the power of arts integration. We use the Kennedy Center Definition of Arts Integration, which is on the screen. Through arts integration, students are able to engage in learning through multiple modalities. They're able to learn academic content more deeply. They are able to develop perseverance, the ability to take risks, think creatively, creatively and critically, solve hard problems and ask good questions. In the images you see here, a couple of, in a couple of classrooms you see here, students are creating what we call tableaus. That's when they come together to develop a concept that they're learning about and they're able to actually embody the learning, which leads to students learning at deeper levels. The young person with the hat on, during a fashion project, they created their own shirts and he's getting ready for their fashion show. The arts provide that emotional connection to learning, which makes learning stickier. We also value the project approach. We value a student-centered constructivist, real-world learning approach. Through the project approach, students' questions lead the learning. They use those questions to guide shared learning, which includes fieldwork, which includes field experts coming into the building as well as field trips that students go on. The project approach allows for integrated curriculums, so students are learning, reading, math, social studies, science, and writing through projects they care about. So children are able to learn academic skills through intellectual pursuits. This allows for students to develop those critical 21st century skills that are so important. We also value social-emotional learning. We know that we have to spend time developing social-emotional skills and strategies in order for students to be able to learn the important academic skills they need as well. We have many strengths to leverage that we're proud of. We, prior to COVID, our academic growth was significantly trending upward and we're going to continue that trajectory. We have a committed, dedicated team who effectively partners with our students and families in the community. We are so grateful to be able to work with families in partnering together to develop the whole child. We have a strong staff culture and professional learning model. As I've mentioned, arts integration and project work is our strengths of ours. We have an action-oriented approach to using data, all types of data, for continual growth and improvement, and we have a strong governing board who is also committed to continual improvement. As all schools, we have lots of opportunities for growth, particularly right now in the current context. And we know that we absolutely must continue to accelerate learning for all students, particularly in the primary grades, making sure that we're consistently narrowing those gaps in students' academics and social-emotional learning so students enter third grade on grade level. We know that we must provide opportunities for students to have access to essential content at their grade level and particularly in this current context with the many challenges that we had many challenges before COVID and we have a lot of challenges now that we are in the midst of this new reality with COVID and the learning disruptions that have happened over the past two years and continue to happen. We know that we have to provide increased levels of support for students and teachers. I'm going to share a couple of our priorities. One is curriculum and instructional planning. Over the next few years, we are going to double down on the work that we've been doing related to arts integration and project work because we know that leads to deeper learning. We've seen evidence of it. We are going to continue to build the intentional explicit skill-based instruction while also providing those meaningful opportunities for rich literacy experiences, developing the identity of a student as a reader and a writer, and developing intellectual capacity, including to continue to implement data-driven instruction, particularly in math, uncover misconceptions and to develop conceptual understanding for students. One of our biggest priorities is teacher retention, support, and professional development. Teacher quality is instrumental to this work. It's one of the key levers. To that end, to make this happen, we have a few priorities. I'll just share a couple right now. We have developed pipeline of teachers through local programs and partnerships. We are leveraging our ESR funds to provide teachers with extra layers of support through additional collaboration and planning time, ample opportunities for observation and feedback cycles through the creation of a new position called Teacher Leader Coach and through our admin team being very committed to that as well, and hiring additional members for our team so that for student support team as well as other members of our team to be able to provide that extra planning and support for teachers. I'm going to turn it over to all the wonderful people who are here today to provide public comment, but I thank you so much for spending some of your evening with us to learn more about Academy for Integrated Arts. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now, Susan, any closing comments or anything like that?
No, let's proceed. It's their turn.
Sounds good. Alright, so at this time, we'll move on to taking public comments and just once again try and keep it under two minutes and I'll call your name and take you off mute. And we will begin with Sandy Gonchar.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm hearing feedback. Good evening. My name is Sandy Gonchar. And as a distinguished Kansas master teacher, can you hear me?
There's an echo.
I think you were showing up twice Sandy, so I'm wondering if we go to the next person then come back to you because you're showing up twice.
Thank you.
Sandy, if you turn down your volume on your computer, it might work because we could be hearing you through your computer.
Okay, let me try that.
Is this better?
Can you hear me? You can hear me now?
Yep.
Well then, I will start again. Good evening. My name is Sandy Gonchar and as a distinguished Kansas master teacher and member of the Rockhurst University faculty, both as an adjunct and a mentor for student teachers as well as an active member of the Kansas-Missouri Arts Education Network. I'm here this evening to join the ebullent chorus of accolades for AFIA and the exemplary work and unique value of this highly esteemed academic institution. The Academy for Integrated Arts evidences on a day-to-day basis. I have had the good fortune to personally witness this on multiple occasions, the phenomenal success of this institution as it achieves its goals and objectives under the leadership, under the outstanding leadership, I should say, of their executive director, Tricia DeGraff, and the exceptional educators and support staff who recognize and prioritize a high-quality inclusive, a high-quality of inclusive and equitable education, serving to create a fertile learning environment, stimulating students to explore their curiosity, take educational risks, and think metacognitively for creative problem-solving, all while confidently giving voice to their ideas and talents through the exceptional experience of a well-cultivated arts-integrated environment. AFIA provides the ideal setting for students and teachers to collaborate together in recognition of and maximize the talents of each individual student while building lifelong skills to facilitate self-motivation and responsibility, self-reliance and cooperation, nurturing success and continued growth both personally and academically. Children learn to value and appreciate their own unique strengths and resourcefulness with a social awareness of and appreciation for others' perspectives. The process of integrating the arts splashes a variety of colors on the canvas of the students' thinking. It opens their minds to a rainbow of imagery and a lyrical and syncopated ethos of the literary, visual, music, and performing arts. In conclusion, I believe it is imperative we join together as a community to prioritize strengthening our alliance with AFIA to further their mission. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Vonchak Clark.
There we go. The lights went off, so I had to turn them back on. Hello, my name is Vonchak Clark and I am a pre-K kindergarten teacher as well as a teaching and learning coach here at Academy for Integrated Arts. This is my eighth school year here. The core values, mission, and vision align with what I believe in. We believe in teaching the whole child. We are very intentional about our social-emotional instruction and how to equip students with strategies to be self-aware and socially aware. We are also, we also highly value arts integration and constructivism. We see evidence that supports that when students can take the lead in the learning that is happening, there is more of an emotional connection and investment, which leads to academic ownership. We utilize the project approach, which has produced projects that address social justice issues, have built relationships with various members of our community, and has allowed families to come in as experts and be a part of the learning as well. I've heard so many families share how much they appreciate the kind of learning that happens and how they have seen growth in their children over time. AFIA is a school that truly values its students, families, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Allison Doran.
Hello, my name is Allison Doran. I teach first grade at AFIA. When you walk into our school, it is obvious that students love being here. It's seen in the art on our walls, the laughs on the playground, and the investment in all learning. So why? What is different? Well, AFIA just does school the way it's meant to be, with the well-being of every child at the center. Children feel like they are connected, contributing, and capable members of their school family. Students feel loved and seen. Teachers love all students and know the potential of every child. Children learn that every emotion is valuable and that there is nothing that could take away our love for them. Students also feel that they matter and contribute to our school community. We wish others well, have school helper jobs, and make sure every child's voice is heard. All students at AFIA also feel capable. Arts integration is beneficial for countless reasons, but especially because it makes curriculum accessible to all. We teach through student interests and differentiate instruction based on data. I asked one of my students at family teacher conferences what they wanted to tell their mom about school and they stated, "Mom, I just love it here." When I accepted a job at AFIA five years ago, I told my family in St. Louis, "I'll stay in Kansas City a year or two, then we'll see." AFIA is the reason I am still in Kansas City. At AFIA, I get to be the teacher I always dreamed of being, surrounded by colleagues working towards the same goal. I get to watch children I love deeply learn, grow, and thrive because they have teachers that fully see them. We see their desires, interests, and needs and respond to them. Our city needs more schools like AFIA.
Thank you. We will now hear from Michael Blakeney.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name, yeah, my name is Michael Blakeney and I'm a proud parent of a pre-K student at AFIA. I remember most mornings prior to going to AFIA, my daughter would throw herself on the ground, crying in opposition of attending daycare. I remember her saying, "Don't you love me? Do I have to go to school? Why are you doing this to me?" Almost every single day, did not fail. Since attending AFIA, which she affectionately calls Art School, she cannot wait to go. Most days, she won't get out of the car to go home without either a candy bribe or a princess scoop. She tells us she has the best teacher ever. She sings songs all the time at home. She loves art. She's friends with numerous students and we know we made the right choice for her as she loves being a part of her school community. To discuss this with you today is the least I could do to show my continued support for what AFIA has done for her and for our family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have Ayana Golden.
First of all, I would like to say hello to the staff of AFIA and guests. I am Ayana Golden, a fellow scholar of AFIA. I'm now in 10th grade. As for why I think AFIA is a good school, correction, I don't think, I know AFIA is a remarkable and phenomenal school. AFIA has a great team of talented and caring, intelligent leaders. AFIA goes above and beyond for their scholars, preparing them for higher education as well as teaching them, as well as teaching their scholars discipline, respect, and responsibility. AFIA has helped me excel in my math and all my other subjects. Now I look at myself a 4.0 DPA student. AFIA has encouraged me to do better, but also be better. They're like my own village. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Latrice Williams.
Good evening. My name is Latrice Williams and I am one of the student success coaches here at AFIA. I am also the parent of a recent AFIA alum and a homeowner and small business owner along the Truce Avenue corridor. So having a high-quality school like AFIA in close proximity has been very important to me on many different levels. My son transferred to AFIA from a different charter school in third grade. He was struggling academically and consequently socially and emotionally and his self-confidence was depleted. I wasn't sure how to help him in the school. His school at the time couldn't offer many answers or solutions, so I started looking into other options. There just so happened to be a beautiful new school building right across the street from where we lived. There were kids running up the ramp to go inside and staff members of different shades, many that looked like me, opening car doors and waving parents goodbye. I took the chance and scheduled a visit. I remember sharing my concerns about my student and the idea of retaining him. Principal Colbert gave me some material to read concerning outcomes surrounding retaining students so I would have some data to help inform my decision. I ultimately made the decision to retain my child and the AFIA administrators respected my decision and said they had a spot for him and he transferred in the beginning of the 2017-18 school year. A year later, my son really began to blossom. He still had some academic challenges, mostly around reading comprehension and fluency, but his attitude completely changed. He was happy to go to school. He had friends and he loved his teacher. And even when he didn't understand something, he was confident in his ability to problem-solve. He took ownership of his learning. He would come home excited to share. He had moved up a letter tier in reading intervention with Mr. Alex and he was very proud of his progress. Even during such an unprecedented event as COVID-19, AFIA provided all of the tools and resources needed to learn from home that kept my son engaged in learning and even checked on my family's personal needs. Today, my son is a middle schooler in a building combined with high school students and he's told me so far he feels prepared to compete academically and socially. AFIA is an excellent, high-quality school. It has made our neighborhood more desirable. It's raised our real estate. I believe our neighborhoods are safer and more prosperous when we have good schools truly embedded within the community. AFIA has been a blessing to my family and I know it continues to be just that for many others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Carrie Snyder.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Snyder and it's just really an honor and a privilege to be able to, I'm not going to look at all my friends at AFIA right now because I will get choked up because they're very special to me. I've been privileged to serve as a program evaluator, researcher, consultant, teacher-coach at AFIA as a part of my role in the greater teacher education workforce in Kansas City. And I feel like I've had a bird's eye view. I got to start doing some of those things when Dr. DeGraff first came to AFIA. So I've seen the remarkable transformation of teaching and learning that takes place there. AFIA is a leader in innovative professional growth. AFIA values evidence-based teacher support as a requirement for urban education and reflects exceptional professional commitment in the work that they do. Dr. DeGraff and her leadership team really prioritize teacher learning alongside of child learning and that professional development provides dedicated time, dedicated resources, job-embedded coaching, and on and on to engage teachers in continual learning and professional development. They're also a leader in innovative teaching and learning. You've heard a little bit about this already as the school centralizes integrating the core subject areas with the arts. AFIA teachers continually have increased fidelity to this model over the years and consequently that strengthens the child outcomes and translates to improved program outcomes overall. AFIA challenges all students to learn intellectually as well as academically and of course through that social-emotional learning piece. Students are challenged daily with tasks that are cognitive tasks to promote higher-order thinking. AFIA believes that children learn best through multiple means of engagement and representation and ways of knowing and this has lived out, this philosophy has lived out in everyday routines, lessons, and activities and experiences. Maybe above all, but I don't know which to prioritize, but AFIA creates a safe place, a safe space for children and families to learn and grow. The social-emotional growth of students is a priority alongside their academic growth and AFIA really recognizes families' funds of knowledge and brings families in as partners, as you can also see evident in some of the other sharing, other remarks. AFIA also adopts trauma-informed practices to really create a trauma-informed school as a model for other schools in our area. The staff collaborate with leading professionals to continually think about how to be resilient, how to be a trauma-informed school and continue their commitment to their children and families. And I believe AFIA with your support will continue to be a leading school for our city.
Thank you. Now we have Bianca Holland.
Good evening. My name is Bianca Hollands and I currently have a third grader who is attending Academy for Integrated Arts. My child has attended Academy for Integrated Arts since kindergarten and enjoys attending AFIA. I believe the learning structure is described as the ability to adapt to the different functions or activities created to provide a fun way of learning. I am a parent who believes that education is important and I believe the education structure improves the intelligence of the child that attends AFIA. The first quarter of school begins with the learning of the progress of your child and as a parent, I am very impressed with my child's reading level and the teaching that is provided to, that shows the areas where he can improve and the areas where he has improved. The feedback of my child's progress makes me proud to know that I have a child who attends Academy for Integrated Arts. Anytime there is a concern of a subject that a student can have as far as a progress, for example, the parent-teacher conference, now that they have the goals of where they want your child to be, I am proud to know that my child is currently reading above grade level currently right now and I'm already excited and proud of Academy for Integrated Arts for the education structure and him excelling his skills. So at this time, I'm very, very, very impressed with this school structure and if there is a challenge for any area of the learning, that the way that the teaching is taught is very respected and being that someone who is continuing their own education, this is a very good area to have a child attend school even though there is different ways of learning.
Great, thank you. Now we have Katie Booty.
Hello, hi, my name is Katie Booty and I have worked alongside Academy for Integrated Arts in multiple capacities over the years as a partner with the work I do at a nonprofit called Lean Lab Education. And I would say when I think about Academy for Integrated Arts and I think about this particular moment in time, especially after the disruption of COVID-19 in the last 20 months and how our education sector has changed, I think it's imperative that we support learning environments that one, affirm student identities. It's not lost on me that since I've been working with AFIA over the last five years, they have been committed to a diverse staff, committed to social-emotional learning, and committed to creating a learning environment that beats the whole child where they are. Two, deepen learning enough then take evidence-based ways. Their constructivist approach and their commitment to that pedagogical framework has been remarkable since day one and where we know students are entering in after a year of distance learning, they're coming in at all different, all different places. So it's really important we support learning environments that meet our children where they are and give them agency in the learning process. And three, strategic evidence-based practices. I think one thing that's also struck me about the leadership at AFIA, particularly Tricia, is her deep commitment to research and evidence-based pedagogy. So she's always been one to endorse strategic interventions for students like literacy lab, like differentiated instruction, and building off of that constructivist approach. And finally, again, going back to leadership, leadership that also is committed to pushing boundaries for what's possible for students. So consistently, AFIA has been against, going against the grain to push for learning environments that meet all children and promote creativity and the whole child. So that's one thing I'd like to touch on in my work specifically with AFIA. I was in the building yesterday. What I saw just as a human in the building was in every room, students working at their own pace, engaging in differentiated instruction with interventionists, targeting students in a learning environment that promoted creativity. that promoted creativity and was truly authentically supportive of students. So that's all I have to say. Keep up the good work and I endorse AFI being a shining star in our community.
Now we have David Fritz.
Good evening. My name is David Fritz. I've been an elementary music and middle school math teacher in the Center School District in South Kansas City for the past 19 years. But more importantly, I'm Violet in fourth grade in August in kindergarten's dad who attend Academy for Integrated Arts, or as it's commonly referred to, AFI. From the moment I had my first visit to AFI, I knew that their school was doing things differently than normal school and I loved it. AFI embraces what a child is best at, playing and creating. They encourage and plan for times for their students to learn through playing and then give them multiple mediums to create artifacts based on their learning. Organized playing is an educational strategy, strategy that should be used in all schools. Allowing children to use their creativity should be the norm, not the exception. AFI embraces both and that's why my children love their school and their teachers. My children are allowed to be kids and play at various times throughout the day, not just at recess. They are allowed to harness their creativity in ways I am jealous of because I never had the opportunity to learn that way. However, I use that feeling of jealousy to make my classes more creative and playful when I'm teaching my students at my school. And if my children in my child's school are inspiring me as an educator and a parent to do things differently and ultimately better, they must be doing something right. Five years ago, my wife and I were deciding what school would be best for Violet in someday August. Without hesitation, we would choose AFI again and again. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. AFI is truly an amazing place.
Thank you. We now have Kiana Cobbin.
Hi, I'm Kiana Cobbin. Thank you for having me here and allowing me to speak on behalf of AFI. This is my 15th year in education, my 14th year as an elementary school teacher. And eight of those years have been here at AFI. I support AFI first and foremost because of the vision and mission this school stands for. AFI and its approach to develop the whole child through constructive as approach, social emotional learning and arts integration is effective and is proving to increase student achievement for all students regardless of race, ethnicity, background, or socioeconomic status. With over 85% of our student body identifying as African-American, this is important. This is also important to me as an African-American female educator. I know what the power of a high-quality education can do for a child's future. Especially children in our community who have many odds against them. The work AFI has committed to goes beyond the classroom environment, is transformational, inspirational, and legendary. Through the constructivist approach, students are constructing and understanding of concepts and skills through inquiry. As the teacher, I have had the pleasure for the last eight years to facilitate, facilitate those rich learning experiences by guiding students with higher-order questions, questioning, and reasoning. It's through these experiences, students' learning is so much more meaningful. At this school, students are not just seeing, but heard. There are ample opportunities for them to express themselves at all different levels and on many different platforms. Children are happy and I know this because I am a former parent as well. My daughter, who is now in middle school, speaks of being in middle school and being overly prepared in her classroom and feeling super confident in the classroom and she attributes that to AFI. My son, who was also at a new school and was a student here, speaks of how much he misses AFI and the environment that was here. So I know for a fact that children are happy and enjoy school here and that's not happening everywhere. So I, I, I totally go for AFI 110%. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Lindsay Fills.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Fills and I have a six and eight-year-old that attends AFI. And I taught in education for 10 years in the elementary field and I am currently in the early childhood field of education. And I was very curious of the schools around where we lived and AFI was about a mile away. And we toured about 20 schools before stepping into AFI. And it was just such a breath of fresh air when we came in because you could just see on the walls, things weren't like make and take, but everything was creativity and expressiveness. And as you walked down the walls, you heard loud and noisy rooms, which is exactly what I wanted for my kids. I didn't want a school where kids were like soldiers and it was a teacher-driven classroom, but a student-driven room. And I noticed that right away that kids were engaged. And as someone who left education, because it wasn't the system that I wanted to teach in, it made me kind of think this was the school that I was meant to teach in and I would want for my kids because of the opportunities that the teachers had to be creative and had given the kids to develop in their own way instead of by a textbook. They were very welcoming to our family. In kindergarten, I was allowed to come in weekly and read to the class. And that meant a lot to me as someone who missed the classroom. They valued my involvement. And it's a safe place for my kids to express themselves. When my son wanted to wear fingernail polish to school, he was in a safe space where the teachers, you know, held him up and didn't make fun of him and they set the tone for the rest of the class. We recently went to Worlds of Fun, which is a theme park here. And my six-year-old said, Mom, can we come back here and just not write any rides, but just draw all the rides and create pictures of the rides? And that just really touched me because I can't imagine taking a kid to a theme park and them not wanting to ride and ride. So they want all their art hung up when they come home. They talk about how to process conflicts. My son wanted, instead of being mad at a friend, he told me, could he, could I talk to his teacher about setting up a time for him to talk to a classmate and apologize the next day at recess? And they're teaching communication to the kids. And I also, like Latrice, wanted to retain my kid before COVID and the administration was very supportive in letting me make my decision. So I just appreciate AFI and where they support kids and support parents and let us really be involved and engaged, but they also do such a great job of upholding student worth and student learning. So thank you, AFI, for all that you do for all of us.
Great. Now we have Samantha C.
We ask a lot from our schools. When I was looking at the Kansas City Public School landscape, I knew I wanted a school that is inclusive and diverse, continuously offering both mirrors and windows in peers, teachers, resources, literature. And I wanted a school where my students would thrive academically. I have two children at AFI. For just those two, I need a school that can accept children who issue gender norms, those who need accommodations to thrive in the classroom, neurodivergent children, those who need accelerated work and are self-motivators, and those who need significant scaffolding to succeed. Just for my two children, because my children are all of those things and more. Providing this differentiation and all the additional differentiation required by all of the other students in the school and the support needed is a place where AFI is excelling. We joined AFI last year in the pandemic and watched as they leveraged what was clearly a strong pre-existing focus on community and social emotional wellness to build incredibly effective online classrooms. My children made friends with people they had never met. They truly loved teachers they had never seen in person. I was grateful this year to send my children into the school building and see how all their various facets have been supported, accepted, and celebrated. Anyone who has taught will tell you that meeting state standards while also meeting the needs of the students physically in your classroom and teaching in a way that they find engaging is really difficult. It is slightly easier when you have high-quality professional development and a supportive administration. AFI excels here as well. The students are engaged, the faculty is engaged, the administration is engaged. And my family looks forward to continuing to be engaged in this community for many years. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we have Haley Hurst.
Hi, sorry. Hi, my name is Haley Hurst and I am a sixth-grade teacher at AFI. And six years ago, I was working for an ed nonprofit. But I came to AFI on a school visit and I really quickly learned that AFI was a really special place. And so the thing that brought me to be a teacher here at this school and also has kept me here for so long is that the belief and the mission and vision is not just words, but it's actually lived out day-to-day in both the student experience and the staff experience. So I actually heard Allison mention earlier the three Cs capable, connected, and cared for. And I believe that these are really the foundation of the student experience at AFI. Students feel capable through academic support and student-centered instruction. We really try to meet students where they are and help them go where they want to be. Students feel connected to one another, teachers and the community, engaging in projects, dancing with each other, and just joyful learning throughout all grade levels. And lastly, students feel cared for through the social emotional support and just relationships with one another and the staff. I actually had a student that joined our school this week and as we were going on a walk around the playground, she shared with me that this was the first school that she's ever had teachers and adults talk to her, care about her, and want to get to know her. She had never had that at other schools. And the second thing that I would say is our staff experience is really strong at AFI. So this team is the real deal. I've worked in several different school contexts and I've never seen a team that cares about each other, is supportive, positive, and collaborates with one another. We have structures that allow us to elaborate across grade levels with people of various expertise and even working closely with our administration team. And I'm just so grateful to have coworkers to learn from, share with, challenge one another, and really just be in this fight for educational equity together. And most of all, I just love the way that we are growth-centric, knowing that this work is messy. But if we do this together with families and students, we can make it. And so I support AFI continuing that process.
Thank you. We just have a few more people to get through. We're now going to hear from Ms. Anderson, who is Anna's grandmother.
Hello and good afternoon to everyone. I'm sorry about being late. But I just wanted to say, I've been a parent, well, a grandparent, as well as a parent in the Kansas City School District since 1987. AFI tops them all. And I'm not saying it just because I've had, you know, two grandkids attend this school. They've always been there for us. They stand by and they are determined to make sure that our scholars exceed. The parents are always welcome at AFI. Our, I'm sorry. Our questions are always answered. Our school, our scholars are always involved in something and they are visible and heard at all times. And I do mean heard at all times. Many scholars do not develop skills necessary to succeed in other schools, but if a child attends AFI, I know they would be given the correct tools to succeed. As a grandparent and a parent speaking, speaking for AFI, AFI sets the bar high above all the other schools. They take schools, they take notes and know and follows their scholars. I have a fifth-grade daughter also attending AFI. And I am afraid, actually, she has one more year at AFI. And I'm afraid to see her leave. I wish they would continue and succeed and go to a higher grade. But this is one thing I'm just going to have to let go. She has a great teacher who is passionate, involved, motivated, creative, committed to her scholars. I can go on and on, but I don't want to take up all the time, you know, saying what I think of her. I've been a parent in the Kansas City District, like I said, for decades. And like I said, they tops everyone else. I'm kind of emotional a little bit, but this is a great school and this is something that we need. And I wish other schools was following suit with AFI. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Asha Moore.
Who are you? Hello. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Asha Moore. I am the Assistant Principal at Academy for Integrated Arts. Prior to my role as the Assistant Principal, I was the Dean of Students, a classroom teacher. And I am also a parent of a current AFI student. And I want to go off my script here a little bit because I had my parent-teacher conference today and I just felt really proud, proud of my daughter, who's a first grader, who's really excelling, but also proud as a school leader because I know that her success is contributed to just the work that the teachers have put in and just all the support that she has been given and knowledge and skills. But I've been at AFI for eight years. Hopefully my role says something about my love, commitment, and loyalty to AFI. The years I spent as a teacher at AFA are years I'll never forget. The projects my students engaged in taught them skills that have contributed to their success as middle and high school students. My favorite project was titled "Struggles Through Time." And there's a mural hanging in the building that represents the learning that was created through this project. I truly believe in the vision and mission of AFI. I'm grateful to get to support our hard-working and selfless teachers and staff and work alongside amazing leaders to carry out our vision. Although we have goals to accomplish, we have established an equitable, trusting, and safe environment where teachers have a passion for, for teaching and develop a learn, a love for learning in children. This summer, an old student who is now a junior in high school and lives in another state reached out to me because he needed help with an assignment he was working on. This month, I received a text that said, hey, Mrs. Moore, I was just thinking about you. I hope you're doing well. And although this story is personal to me, I know that teachers have and will have similar stories because of the relationships that they are building with children. They aren't only teaching children, they are changing lives by making an lasting impact. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we will end with a video of a public comment. Let me just share my screen. And it is a little bit longer than two minutes, so I'll probably just stop it at two, but start over.
We can't hear it, Bailey.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone know why? I can hear it on my end.
Did you share your audio? Share sound?
Oh, I believe so, but.
That's a teacher who taught remotely, so.
Yes, any advice. Here, let me stop, stop sharing. Try one more time.
Bailey, we can share it with the commissioners.
Okay, perfect. Do you have the video or else?
I don't. If you send it to me, I can make sure they all get it.
Thank you. All right, well, with that.
I can try to share it from my screen if you, if that's okay, Bailey. Okay, sorry. I'll just try really fast and if it doesn't work, then we'll, I know, because I know that you all have a, we're towards the end here.
Hello, my name.
Could you hear that one? Did you hear that? Okay, so let me just share my screen. Oh. Okay, and I'll stop it at two minutes like you mentioned before. Oh, whoops.
This is Harmon Brownlee and I am a Kennedy Center Teaching Artist and a consultant for Focus Five, a national arts integration consulting firm. I specialize in arts integration, integrating dance and movement into the curriculum. I've been a teaching artist for just over 37 years. And I'm recording this video to express my wholehearted support for the mission, vision, and the work of the Academy for Integrated Arts. I was first introduced to AFI about four years ago. And as I have worked with the students, the teachers, and the leadership of AFI, I have become more and more impressed with the school. Why? For three primary reasons. One, as we move into the 21st century, it will become increasingly important that all children, not only that all children not only learn to read, write, and do math, but that they learn to apply the essential skills of creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. Through the artistic process, these skills are grown and developed. Students at AFIA
So Bailey, since it's six-twenty, I stopped because I know you all have to, but I will send it to the commissioners can see it.
Sounds good. Thank you. So yeah, with that, uh that wraps up the public comment portion. I know you guys have a board interview next week. Um but I will see the commission uh at six-thirty, I guess, for uh Guadalupe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any, any last words? I'm gonna take those now. Alright, thanks, guys.